This is the court reporter. I'm present whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And to those of us joining, I will wait a few, a few more, another minute or so, and then we'll go ahead and reconvene and get started. All right. It looks like we have everyone in from the waiting room. So I will just start with orienting us this afternoon. Good afternoon. It is 1:02 PM on February 18th, 2025. I'm Nicole Kinsey, Presiding Hearing Officer for the Administrative Hearings Office of the State Water Resources Control Board. This is the second half of our day on the opening day of the hearing on the pending petitions for change of water right permits, 16478, 16479, 16481, and 16482 of the Department of Water Resources for the proposed Delta Conveyance Project. We met this morning in a hybrid format and did hear policy statements from a number of interested persons. And I had reserved this afternoon for us to talk about procedural matters and scheduling of this hearing and other matters going forward. We are all on Zoom at this time. We've adjourned from our hybrid format and are all appearing on Zoom teleconference. But the same caveats apply in terms of if you're having technical difficulties, please send us an email and let us know. And the, the team here can let, can let me know. We are joined on my end with staff from the Administrative Hearings Office, the Division of Water Rights, and the Office of Chief Counsel. We will, of course, post this afternoon's recording to the FTP folder for this proceeding. There will also be the recording on the AHO YouTube channel. And we have the court reporter for this afternoon as well, and we will make that transcript available once we received it. Picking up from where we left off, I need to first go ahead and take appearances. I appreciate your patience on that. It's easier to do this when we're all on Zoom so that I'm not sitting in a room and also trying to look at my Zoom screen. So I appreciate that. So I'd like to go through appearances and then we'll talk about our agenda for the afternoon. In terms of timing, if we need to, we'll take an afternoon break. And we most certainly will have a hard stop by 5:00 PM. Hopefully we'll wrap up well sooner than that, but we will not go later than 5:00. I will start. This is really in no particular order. It's sort of roughly in alphabetical order, but not even that. So bear with me. But we'll start with appearances and I will first look to the California Department of Water Resources.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey. I will see that we're speaking through the Aqua Room for the Court Reporter and for your staff. If you'd like to rename that as DWR.
Great.
Yeah. Would you like me to name my colleagues with me?
That would be lovely. Thank you.
Yes, I'm here with Chris Butcher and also with Stephanie Morris.
Thank you. Good afternoon. State Water Contractors.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey, Miles Krieger for State Water Contractors, and I'm also appearing for Coachella Valley Water District today.
Thank you. Good afternoon. U.S. Bureau of Reclamation.
Anna Braithwaite with the Slippers Office in Sacramento. Clearly Amy is on leave this week and will be back.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Westland's Water District.
McKenzie Carlson on behalf of Westland's Water District.
Thank you. Good afternoon. South Delta Water Agency, Central Delta Water Agency, Heritage Land Company, and Rudy Mucy Investments LP.
Good afternoon, Dean Reese for those Protestants.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Byron Bethany Irrigation District.
Good afternoon, Kelly Tabor from Somax Simmons and Dunn on behalf of Byron Bethany Irrigation District, also appearing on behalf of the County of Sacramento, Sacramento County Water Agency, Sacramento Area Sewer District, and the City of Stockton. And with me on behalf of all of those parties is my colleague, Luenda Lacy.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Let's see. East Bay Municipal Utility District. Eldorado Irrigation District.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey. Robert Donlin appearing on behalf of Eldorado Irrigation District and also the Placer County Water Agency.
Thank you. Good afternoon. North Delta Water Agency and Reclamation Districts 999, 2060, and 2068.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey. Austin Cho appearing on behalf of those entities.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Yolo County. And this is a, a group, I think for you, Ms. Missouri, but I'll go ahead and list them off. I have San Joaquin County, Solano County, Contra Costa County, Contra Costa County Water Agency, and local agencies of the North Delta, Friends of Stone Lake National Wildlife Refuge, David J. Elliott and Sons Stillwater Orchards, Frank Loretz and Worcester Ranches LP.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey. I am here.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Tom Keeling, co-counsel with Ms. Missouri for the County of San Joaquin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Keeling. City of Antioch. Diablo Water District. San Luis and Delta Mendota Water Authority.
Good afternoon, Daniel O'Hanlon of Chronic Moscovis Tideman and Dryard appearing on behalf of San Luis Delta Mendota Water Authority.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
And also Rebecca Harms on behalf of the San Luis and Delta Mendota Water Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Harms. To Larry Lake Basin Water Storage District.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey. This is Peter Keel, and I'm joined by my colleague Vince Goble. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Desert Water Agency.
Hearing Officer Kinsey, this is Miles Krieger. I can also appear for Desert Water Agency. However, I'm not sure Desert Water Agency was a party.
There was some confusion. I think they ended up on our party list. But there was some confusion about whether there was an intent to make a policy statement only or to participate as a party.
Okay. Well, to the extent they're deemed a party today, I will appear on their behalf.
Okay. Thank you. Pescadero Reclamation District, number 2058. Save the California Delta Alliance and Hood Community Council.
Good afternoon, Michael Brodsky on behalf of Save the California Delta Alliance and Hood Community Council. And my screen there showing is MacBook 16. I don't know if you have the capacity to rename that for the court reporter. I'm not sure how to do it on my end.
I think we are, I won't say I, I think the team can handle it. Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Good afternoon. Next I have Farm Bureau, Delta Caucus, Sacramento County Farm Bureau, and Russell Van Loeben cells. Environmental Council of Sacramento and Habitat 2020.
Hearing Officer Kinsey, I can report back to both of the last two entities you just mentioned if they don't end up having someone here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Missouri. Buena Vista Rancheria of Miwok Indians, Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians, Winnumwin Two Tribe, Little Manila Rising, and Restore the Delta.
Hi, Officer Kinsey. Nice to meet you. My name is Shella Chowdhury. I'm a certified student attorney with the Yale Environmental Justice Law and Advocacy Clinic. I'm here with my supervising attorney Stephanie Softy and my co-counsel student attorney Donna Castro Galindo and Tara Bear, representing Buena Vista Rancheria of Miwok Indians, Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians, the Winnumwin Two Tribe, Little Manila Rising, and Restore the Delta. We also have a few of our clients joining us today. So we have Barbara Barrigan Perea from Restore the Delta and Morgan Snyder, also from Restore the Delta Online. We may have a few more people trickling in as well.
Thank you. Welcome and good afternoon. San Francisco Baykeeper.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey. Eric Buscher for San Francisco Baykeeper.
Thank you. Good afternoon. California Indian Environmental Alliance. California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance.
Good afternoon, Chris Schutz for the California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Aqua Alliance. California Water Impact Network.
Good afternoon, Roger Moore on behalf of the California Water Impact Network.
Good afternoon. Friends of the River.
Good afternoon, Ms. Kinsey. It's Gary Bobker for Friends of the River.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Save California Salmon. Sierra Club California et al., which I have as Center for Biological Diversity, Planning and Conservation League, and North Coast Rivers Alliance.
Good afternoon, Bob Wright appearing for those parties.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Association and the Institute for Fisheries Resources.
Lynn Spain here appearing as general legal counsel for those two organizations.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Golden State Salmon Association. Deirdre Desjardins. Save Our Sand Hill Cranes. San Joaquin Audubon Society. And finally, I have Camp Lotus and et al., quite a number of parties, but do I have anyone who joined the Camp Lotus NOI? All right. Thank you. Thank you for that exercise. In terms of our agenda for this afternoon, this is what I have generally outlined. I thought we would start, I mean, there are a number of, let me back up. I've received a number of, I'm sorry, Ms. Chowdhury, do you have someone else to introduce?
Ah, yes. Sorry about that. We just wanted to make a note that we'll also be reporting back to CIEA as well, the California Indian Environmental Alliance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And, and Ms. Kinsey, let me also note that Friends of the River will be reporting back to the Camp Lotus parties.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Kinsey, if we're reporting back, CSPA will also report back to the San Joaquin Audubon and Aqua Alliance.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So to turn back where I was going to pick up, which is we've had, since we met last in December, we've had, of course, a number of, of filings and happenings. We had the second amended hearing notice come out in January. We received a motion for cancellation of the proceeding. We received initial case in chief evidence from DWR. We received partial responses to the supplemental request for information. We received comments from the parties on the hearing issues. And we've received other related and supporting letters from both DWR and other parties. So I wasn't going to go through the exercise of identifying all of them, but I will say I have read them all. And I've read them all carefully. In fact, most of them more than once. Oh, yes. And a number of case management statements that came in, and I very much appreciated those as well. As of today, we received this morning a response from the Department of Water Resources. I did over the lunch break get a chance to take a look at that. I have not fully had a chance to digest it, to be, to be perfectly frank, but I have taken a look at that. So we have a lot to deal with here, although I think a lot of words have already been said, and I did want to emphasize that I have read them carefully. And certainly I'm not planning to rule on anything today and have not made any decisions. This is a chance to address many of those matters. But your, your written filings have been quite thorough and helpful. I thought for our agenda this afternoon, we'd start with a discussion about the requests for supplemental information and where we are with that. That seems to be a big piece of this. And then I'm not sure these two things are separable, but what I was thinking was that next we would turn to the impact of the newly filed petitions for extension of time on this proceeding. I'm not sure I mentioned that in my, my summary of the lineup of where things are, but also on January 21st, as I believe all of you would know, the Department of Water Resources filed petitions for extension of time of the construction and beneficial use deadlines for the SWP permits that issue in this proceeding and also two other related permits. I want, you know, that proceeding is not noticed. It's not incorporated into this proceeding, but I think it is certainly fair to discuss it to the extent it affects how we manage this hearing and this schedule. So I think that is with that general outline, it's, it's fair for us to talk about the impact of those filings on this proceeding. Many of you asked for the opportunity to address the question of the relationship between the two hearings. This is a first opportunity. I think this, this issue will likely arise a number of times as we move forward with this hearing. So I don't know that we'll put it, put it to rest, but this is one, one chance to talk about that. And so we'll start with the request for supplemental information. We may just naturally flow into the petitions for extension of time. Like I said, I'm not sure those two things are really separable. They, they both affect how we conduct this hearing. Most of all, I really want to invite constructive proposals as to how we move forward. I think we're going to need to be a little bit flexible to do this in a way that's efficient and, but develops the record that we need to make an informed decision. So I am very open to constructive thoughts about how to do this and how to handle this with this number of parties and these, the significance of these particular water rights. I don't today intend to address argument about the precise text of the hearing issues. I know we'll get to that in the sense that we're talking about what is the scope of this proceeding and, and for example, does the, the extent to which the supplemental information is necessary for us to go forward. But I think we've, we've addressed the hearing issue matter. You had an opportunity to submit those in writing. I'm, I'm considering those. I've not made any final decisions about how to address all of them. But I don't want to spend time on that today because I think the written comments were, were quite thorough. And then finally, at the end, I do want to turn to hearing logistics. I realize, you know, we're, we're going to have a conversation about how this schedule will proceed, but I do want to talk about logistics because we might as well, and it will come up. And many of you addressed some of those in our, the case management statements about time, time limits and groupings and things like that. I thought we would just touch on that. There are some questions about how objections and oral objections might work. We can talk about those and any other procedural matters related to those types of things. We should also touch on very briefly the site visit and your discussions there. So we'll get to that at the end. So with that background, I think I'd like to turn first to Ms. Carroll and the team at DWR about the request for supplemental information. My compilation is that the, you have submitted to the AHO some of the information, information about direct diversion under the, the permits, information about storage under the permits. But particularly have not submitted the, an annual maximum volume where there's a direct diversion amount. And I think that's the biggest outstanding piece that has not yet been provided to the AHO as well as some understanding of the methodology and where these numbers come from. I think that would help. It helps to understand how the, how these have been calculated, and that was part of the request to provide some background. And I will, let's see, I looked at my team. Can we have? I don't know if Ms. Carroll is on camera. Is Carol on camera? You don't have to be, but I don't, I don't, there we go. We have DWR. Okay, you're talking and now it's, now it's up. Otherwise it was, I was talking to Mr. Schutz, but I wasn't talking to Mr. Schutz. So my, my view was a little, was a little difficult. So Ms. Carroll, I guess my first question for you is going to be where, where DWR is on the request for supplemental information. I know I, I read your response both today and in prior, your proposed permit term. And I think that addresses some things. We'll talk about that, but I first wanted to get a better understanding of frankly, why this is, the DWR has hundreds of smart engineers, right? It's, I mean, impressive, and you're going to build this very impressive tunnel if this, if this proposal is approved. Why? I honestly didn't foresee that this would be as challenging as it is. So, and, and I, I set the schedule with the assumption that this wasn't going to be as difficult. And so now we're in the situation of how do we proceed? But I was wondering if you can address what pieces of this make it? I know that there are 35 years and, and daily data and things like that, but is there anything you'd like to elaborate on why this is such a challenging request?
Well, mostly because of how the data is, you know, kept. If we didn't have electronic data previously, so we can't just, you know, scoop it up and put it together in a spreadsheet. We have to manually sort through all of the paper data in order to go through, and then we have to compile it. There's also the way that the data was collected by the water board was originally by aggregate. So we're having to go back and go through and look at exactly how we operated in order to find the values that you're looking for. So it's not something that was recorded in that form previously.
So DWR has never before, up until my request, has not attempted to develop a maximum annual volume of water, for example, that was exported through the Delta pumps.
No, not, not that I am aware of, because we have been complying with the limits in our water rights permits, which are diversion limits. They are not annual maximums.
So do you have this data? I don't mean this as a gotcha game by any means, but I noticed and there's a chart in one of the, in the EIR, and it shows, I think it's SWP exports, but combined with CVP exports, and it showed a, you know, a little graph that had annual diversion amounts through the Delta pumps. Is that something that you were aware of? Is that something, is it, is it hard to disaggregate CVP from SWP exports? Or is, is that something that's tracked? That's a very compound question. I apologize.
You know, I'd have to ask the experts on that. I'm assuming that that's something that we did with modeling. I don't think that's something we could do easily, though.
So you're not aware, as far as you know, it would not be some, a simple task to just back out whatever was CVP and say, well, look, here's the SWP aggregate number.
Based on what I know about our data, nothing is easy to back out and just put in.
And then is there someone at? Well, let me ask this. Do you anticipate having that type of information about the volume of water exported through the Delta pumps prior to 2009? The maximum volume. Is that something you anticipate having in May? Did I understand that representation right?
That's what we asserted in our time extension petition. Yes.
And then, well, are you planning to submit that information in this proceeding? Or is that still depends on my ruling and whether I decide that the supplemental information is relevant?
That's correct.
Okay.
We've asserted that permit term, believing that we don't need to provide it in this proceeding.
Yes, I read that. So let me ask this way. I mean, I'll just, to be transparent, so the permit term, I think, when I, thinking through that permit term, it does seem to address to me the, the concern that there would be, let me back up. As I understand the permit term, it would prevent DWR from diverting water through the new intake facilities until the board has acted in some way on the petitions for extension of time. And that to me would address this concern that there could be an expansion of, in the amount of water diverted and used because of the availability of additional capacity. And I think it does address that issue. What I I'm thinking through, and I don't think it addresses, is the question of whether approval of the additional intake facilities would be in the public interest if the petition for extension of time is denied by the board, if there isn't, if the elements of a, to grant a petition for extension of time are not met. And that's where this information continues, I think, to be necessary because the board is being asked, as I understand, to approve the additional intake facilities, even if DWR's petitions for extension of time are not granted. Is that, is it a fair understa-, am I, understanding correctly, that DWR's position is that approval of the Delta Conveyance Project, the additional intakes, would be in the public interest, even if the petitions for extension of time are denied?
That's correct.
Okay. I think I'm going to look to the room unless, is there anything else, Ms. Carroll, that you'd like to add to this discussion so far? I'll certainly come back as we go around, but.
That's fine. You can come back to me afterwards.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that information. That was helpful. I will go ahead and look. I don't know if we want to go in a particular order. There are many of you. But maybe I'll just start by looking to the room. If there's anyone, please go ahead and raise your Zoom hand. That, that sets you up in an order. It's quite helpful. If you would like to comment on the supplemental information matter. Ms. Tabor, I think I saw your hand first, please.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. As you've already correctly pointed out, the information, the supplemental information is essential to determining whether or not the petitions are in the public interest. And in fact, you heard this morning, one speaker after another, starting with Secretary Crowfoot, explaining or testifying to you about the additional water that the DCP would deliver. Secretary Crowfoot, if I heard or remember correctly, mentioned something like a million acre feet of water that could have been captured, which begs the question of how much water is being captured now and was captured in the past. The entire benefits of the project, as the department has sold them in its promotional materials, hinge upon the ability to deliver more water in terms of acre feet. None of that is expressed in terms of CFS. So the Sacramento County and other Somax Simmons and Dunn Protestants strongly support the rulings that you've issued requiring this information. And I'll just briefly say you asked, indicated you're looking for constructive suggestions about how you can move the hearing forward. We've filed our motion, and we still strongly believe that the petitions should be canceled for DWR's continued failure to provide the information. But if you decide to move forward with the hearing, I think it would make sense to consider holding two phases of DWR's case in chief before we get to the Protestants' case in chief. And they can submit the supplemental information. We can have a hearing on those technical issues. We can then go to their testimony about impacts and project benefits. I don't know how they can put forth a complete case in chief on the question of impacts and benefits without the information about historic use. So that, that would be our suggestion to, that of course would defer the Protestants' testimony beyond June. But that would give the department the additional time it needs apparently to But that would give the department the additional time it needs apparently to, uh, determine how much water it has exported. Uh, and, uh, one final note on that, um, you mentioned, and I appreciate that, I'm going to certainly check the DCP EIR, that there's a table that identifies the volumes of water exported. Um, certainly the state water board is a responsible agency under SEQA. And, uh, I would, uh, suggest that requesting the information that was the basis for that table would be well within the water board's, uh, authority as a SEQA responsible agency to request from the department, uh, to inform your decision, both on the change petitions and the SEQA issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tabor. And, and I, I actually, I have a citation both for you and for, and for DWR. I didn't mean to say, there's, there's some table in this many thousands of page documents that says this thing. Uh, it's, it's, the, the document is marked as AHO 1050. And I believe it was, I have written down page 29, but in that vicinity. So I think it's a, a, a supporting document.
Thank you.
That's where you can find the table, uh, it, it's a general table that I was looking at. And that's for DWR too, I didn't mean to generally refer to some table that's out there. Ms. Chowdery, please.
Yes, thank you, Officer Kenzie. Uh, my comment goes to the supplemental information, but also a little bit, as you said, to the inseparable issue of the extension of time as well. But, you know, first, we would like to just again ask the hearing officer to grant the motion to dismiss these proceedings or at least to hold these proceedings in advance while DWR clarifies the scope of its water rights, which, you know, it sounds like, based on their last answer, there's still a lot of uncertainty here as to the exact numbers, uh, in a lot of different ways. At this point, while you stated that you won't be ruling on this today, we would like to ask that the AHO make a decision on the matter of staying the proceedings as soon as possible. Uh, I have three primary points to make on this. So first, uh, in light of DWR's filing a petition for extension of time, the current timeline we are moving on seems unnecessarily accelerated. On January 21st, DWR filed a petition for extension of time on the same water rate, uh, permits at issue in these proceedings. The outcome of their petition for extension of time will be of key importance, uh, in these proceedings, as you've mentioned. And there's also a lot of opportunity here, I think, for conflicting and possibly redundant, uh, information seeking. So when they submitted their petition, DWR noted that they, uh, that some of the key materials for their extension of time request, particularly the environmental impact statement, won't be complete until mid 2026. Additionally, the petition for extension of time, they submitted requests and extension all the way through 2085. Given the extent, uh, these, this extensive timeline that they seem to be in favor of, it doesn't seem that there's an urgent or pressing need to move this change request forward right now. Altogether, it seems premature to continue these proceedings in the meantime, until we have that further clarity from the extension of time proceedings. And waiting until the board can make its decision on the extension of time request would just bring that needed clarity and alleviate the need for AHO to continue utilizing this complicated dual scenario hypothetical hearing framework that was utilized in the January 17th notice. Um, at minimum, the current proceeding schedule, at least if the hearing officer is not inclined to dismiss or hold the proceedings, should be decelerated, uh, to give parties sufficient time to understand the changes that DWR is requesting and to adequately, adequately prepare for future submission deadlines and hearing dates. Um, on this point, you know, second, I would like to reiterate that our clients are operating on a very limited capacity and the current schedule is adding unnecessary burden. Um, as we've previously stated, our clients have limited capacity to prepare for these proceedings. And so far as, you know, environmental justice and indigenous organizations often are operating on a very, um, low resource and high demand schedule. DWR has submitted their petition for extension of time on January 21st. The hearing management statement is due on February 11th. Today's pre-hearing conference is February 18th. That's, you know, barely a few weeks between major happenings and less than a full month of time elapsed since the filing for the petition of extension of time. It gives us a very limited amount of time to actually absorb the information and evaluate how DWR's actions impact these proceedings as a whole, even though, you know, we're moving as quickly as we can. And we're trying to understand, it would be better to have more time to fully examine, investigate and research these complicated legal issues. Um, there's also now new hearing dates for sites scheduled in the coming months. And as you'll remember, our clients are also parties to those proceedings. So this creates a pretty unworkable schedule for March and April for all of us. And lastly, as you said, this is an issue that is likely to continue coming up in these proceedings. So I just wanted to remind you that, um, in the hearing officer had said, if an extension of time was filed, that we would have the opportunity to fully brief what the implications for this proceeding would be. Uh, and this briefing period hasn't happened yet. So if you're not inclined to stay these hearings, we would definitely request an opportunity to have a full brief, um, asking for a common period and to utilize the March 24th hearing to actually fully address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, please. Did we lose Mr. Moore? I think.
He is muted.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good, uh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
The California Water Impact Network, uh, uh, one of the joint movements strongly supports the joint, uh, motion to cancel or in the alternative, hold in advance. Uh, as Mr. Whaley eloquently pointed to at the end of this morning, these permits have expired. And as both of the hearing notices indicate, and the supplemental information path that you set out for DWR, uh, indicates, that has important implications for these proceedings. One thing I think is notable from, uh, the policy statements that you heard this morning in support of the DCP is that all of them referred to it as DWR has advocated it, uh, that goes well beyond the current permitted requirements. None of them address the scenario that you asked the supplemental information about, where DWR would be limited to, uh, what beneficial uses it had perfected, if any, through, uh, through 2009. I want to just briefly, uh, address the very belated response to the joint motion, uh, received this morning to state what I think should be obvious, it is too little and too late. Uh, the date for comments on procedural issues, including the central procedural issue of whether the hearing should go forward at all. Uh, what the due date was February 11th. Uh, to try to make progress, the moving port, the moving parties got their joint motion in by January 31st. Uh, DWR submitted, uh, 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 comments on procedural issues, uh, on February 11th and was totally silent on this matter until less than 90 minutes before this hearing started. To the extent that the responses are considered though, um, they largely involve matters that are already rejected in the, the hearing notices, particularly the second one in January, uh, issued on January 17th. Um, so, uh, uh, in, in the letter provided, uh, today, DWR, uh, uh, tries to spin it that it is already provided, uh, supplement, in supplemental information. What that admits, of course, is that, that, uh, both hearing notices laid out four very specific items that DWR not had the option to submit information on, but had to, shall, the word was used. And it has twice failed to do that, and it is twice, and it is now also failed to frame its case in chief on those two alternative, uh, scenarios. Um, even on part three, the information that it provided is plainly inadequate. That's something that the, uh, joint moving parties addressed, uh, in their, uh, joint statement that was submitted back on December 9th, uh, uh, where we, we pointed out the deficiencies even in, uh, the response on, on item three. So it is clear that the supplemental information needed was never provided. Um, DWR next in its letter today indicates that, um, the filing of the extension position, petition, uh, last month somehow removes the need for the supplemental information. Not only was that wrong, it was very specifically and expressly rejected in the second amended hearing notice already, particularly on pages seven through nine of, uh, of, uh, that, uh, ruling, uh, where, uh, among other things, um, uh, you correctly rejected the notion that abiding by the legal limits is enough. You rejected DWR's argument that the information that would be submitted pursuant to a reconsideration request was all that would be necessary, uh, to, uh, proceed and act on, on a change petition uh, within the requirements that, that, uh, that need to be considered. And on, and on page nine, you correctly laid out the thing, the critical things that would be missing from this proceeding. If a decision were made to grant any kind of change petition, uh, without that information. Among other things, uh, it would foreclose any fair or full opportunity to determine whether, um, what DWR asks for can be acted on through a change petition as distinct from requiring a new water right, whether it would injure other legal users and beneficial uses, whether it would impact public trust resources and whether it would be, uh, in the public interest. For that reason, on page nine, the, the second amended hearing notice, uh, correctly found that, uh, to conclude otherwise and, uh, hear and decide the change petition, uh, would be, and I'm quoting here, "an abdication of the board's responsibilities." Uh, it is clear now that DWR is trying to avoid the very path that was laid out, the only one, uh, in, in which a change petition could have been granted. Finally, I want to address the notion DWR raises in its letter that somehow, uh, even though it has twice, uh, failed to submit the supplemental information, uh, it would be reasonable to allow a third bite at the apple and allow the information to be submitted. It says sometime in, i- i- in May. Um, that is fully incompatible with the present schedule, among, and, uh, among other things, would, would severely prejudice the opportunity for protestants to adequately prepare for and, uh, conduct cross-examination on DWR's case in chief, among other things. And it avoids the fact that DWR's entire case in chief is predicated on avoiding that information. We don't even know that the information submitted in May would be nearly enough, given the recognition in the petition to extend, that review will not be incomplete. Review, according to DWR, will not even be complete to sup- uh, to support the extension request until sometime next year. Uh, the most logical and efficient response here, and I think the most constructive one to, to address the question of the day, is, uh, to grant the petition to cancel and i- in the alternative, uh, hold the matter in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I have a follow-up question to help me, now that you've seen DWR's case in chief. So we have that, that can help inform our discussion. Can you identify for me some element of cross-examination based on what you've seen from the witnesses that DWR is planning to call? Where this supplemental information would be necessary or helpful? Just connecting those dots for me would, um, if you can have an example of what you have in mind when you say that the protestants would be inhibited in their ability to conduct an appropriate cross?
Well, um, leaving aside for now the deficiencies that we pointed out already in December in the response on item three, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll just to provide what I think is a, a glib overview for now, uh, uh, a focus on, on the other three completely unanswered questions, items one, two, and four, uh, respectively relating to, uh, the volume of water diverted to storage at, at, at Oroville. Uh, the volume of water exported, uh, from the Southern Delta. Um, and the volume of water, you know, beneficially used under each of the respective water rights through the current and only approved, uh, beneficially used deadline that expired at the end of, of, uh, December 31st. Um, there is a complete dearth of the information needed to, uh, uh, provide an informed understanding on all of those questions. There is simply, uh, a blanket denial from DWR, which is quite disingenuous, uh, about whether that information uh, is even relevant or needed at all, a premise that, that, uh, that your hearing notices have already expressly related. So, um, I, I will leave to our experts in, in, and future discussion, you know, the mechanics of how that would work into specific cross-examination questions. But they centrally relate to the subject of operations. And as the protestants have repeatedly pointed out, even if DWR does not consider the matters uh, uh, pertaining to items one, two, and four, uh, to, uh, be important to its case in chief, they are expressly relevant to the, uh, the protests. And the, the filings that, that CISP and the joint movements, among others, made in, in December actually addressed those points and, and why they were relevant to the, uh, uh, to the protestants in this proceeding. So I think there is no avoiding having the information and being prepared on the, you know, really exhaustive and detailed information that is going to be covered, uh, when the, uh, uh, if the testimony proceeds to hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Keel, would you like to jump in on this?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Kenzie, yes. Um, it'd be somewhat of a contrarian here and suggest that the specific information requests of DWR probably are not necessary for this hearing. I'll give, you know, an example. I think for analyzing a change petition, you have to consider both injury and initiation of a new water right. Um, it does not require that we go through the licensing exercise that would be required to answer the AHO's questions. For example, amounts collected to storage versus directly diverted require pretty complicated water right analysis and engineering. Same thing too with beneficial use. It's pretty simple to identify the amount of water that left the Delta. But as those terms are defined in the water code and board regs and water right permits, you know, amount beneficially used in a year would not necessarily water collected to South Delta storage or groundwater banking. So there's some jeopardy for DWR answering, answering those specific questions. But I haven't gone through the benefit of a licensing exercise with Division Water Right staff. So I, I would just, you know, suggest the, uh, you and your staff have some openness to data that is close that helps analyze whether diversions with DCP would result in greater seasonal diversions than historic. I think is the way to look at it. And so to extent more, uh, general terms could be used that get to the question of the change in diversion, I think that would be most helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. I, I know, I have been thinking about this because one of the reasons, I think, to ask for the amount exported through the Delta pumps is to get to this beneficial use question. I recognize that once it's, you know, delivered to the contractors and it, it is put into terminal storage or it's put underground, I mean, a lot of what I heard this morning was, um, it, it's not in the evidentiary record, but from the policy statements was that this water is stored underground and used at some later time. Uh, so I realized that may be, that seems challenging, particularly challenging. So I was thinking about the, the volume exported from the Delta as one proxy, if you will, of beneficial use. Not that, not that that would be necessarily sufficient in a licensing proceeding, but would give us some idea in a, in a proceeding like this to understand what the differences are. But that is something I have been thinking about. So thank you for your comments on that. Mr. Brodsky.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so one answer to the question of why is it relevant on cross-examination is that the operating criteria are framed so that they're gonna use the North Delta diversions only when the South Delta diversion is pumping at a, at a pre-specified rate. The, uh, the idea on that in the operating criteria is to assure us that we're still going to maintain water quality in the Central and South Delta, that fresh water will still flow down to the Central and South Delta when, even when the North Delta pumps are operating. But we need to know what that total But we need to know what that total amount limit of export from the South Delta is in order to be able to calculate if, under that operating criteria, they would be able to divert anything at all from the North Delta diversions. And that's relevant on cross-examination to DWR's experts. We would have our engineer run some numbers. We would put together an exhibit. And then we will say, isn't this right? Isn't it true that under this, if you're limited to half a million acre feet going out of the South Delta and you're running the South Delta pumps at this rate, anytime you're gonna use the North Delta pumps, then you would be limited to only sending out a few thousand acre feet through the North Delta pumps, North Delta diversion, and this project doesn't make any sense at all. But we need those numbers enable, in order to be able to ask an intelligent question. The other things I wanted to touch on, I agree that the the extension should go first, whether you call it cancel this proceeding or hold this proceeding in advance, whatever you wanna call it, the extension should go first for a number of reasons. Okay, one reason is we've been talking about the extension in terms of up or down only, that either we're gonna grant the extension and you'll have the full amounts and the facial value of the permit, or it'll be denied and you'll be limited to historic use. But the board maintains and has to maintain the ability to condition the extension, right? The public trust doctrine imposes a continuing duty of supervision to consider the environment and to protect the environment wherever feasible. Things have changed, decades have gone by since the original permits were granted. Climate change is upon us. There are now other sources of water that are feasible that weren't feasible before, which goes to the public trust doctrine analysis of protect the environment wherever feasible. So let's say the extension could be granted, but there could be a condition, yeah, well, granted, but place of use needs to be restricted now because this particular area that you're exporting now has other sources of water that are feasible that weren't feasible before. So instead of just two scenarios, right? You can have a bunch of scenarios in between that theoretically we would have to consider in the DCP proceedings. The other thing is I know there's a lot of pressure to get moving on the Delta Conveyance Project. So if the, if the extension hearings are labeled Phase One of the Delta Conveyance Project, I mean, that's fine with me. And, you know, that way we've gotten going on the Delta Conveyance Project. The other thing, that total amount, in addition to be relevant to that area that I mentioned on cross-examination, it's relevant to alternatives, right? So we may wanna, we're certainly gonna present, in our case in chief, witnesses that suggest alternatives. You don't need these North Delta diversions because you have other sources of water available. And so it's not in the public interest to do it when there's other sources of water that are less harmful to the environment. And that can also be relevant on cross-examination to their experts, right? This is how much water total is being exported. Isn't this, Mr. Expert, other way of obtaining water a feasible alternative to that? But we have to know what that total amount is in order to ask the question of whether it's feasible or not. The other thing I want to mention on the supplemental information. I mean, DWR can always submit the supplemental information and argue, this doesn't limit us. Yeah, this is what the number is, but it doesn't limit us and give their argument why. But the regulations clearly give the hearing officer, the AHO, the bill to request supplemental information. And you've done so. And that DW wants to argue that it has this or that implication or does not have this or that implication is not really relevant to whether they're required to submit it. So I would suggest that if these hearings aren't held in advance, in other words, if we don't go to the extension request first, that I would say DWR's case in chief should begin 60 days or 90 days after the supplemental information is is completely submitted in the form that it's been requested. And I think you'd be surprised how fast that information would be forthcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. I had one follow-up that maybe you can help me with because I had been thinking about this in terms of ordering these hearings. And this, what we're calling the dual scenario, which I recognize that it's not actually just two scenarios. It's like a range of scenarios. But we're calling it the dual scenario issue with this proceeding where we have to look at with and without approval of a time extension, which creates some complexities. And then it occurred to me as well, though, if you were to go into the hearing on the petitions for extension of time without an answer on the Delta Conveyance Project, in that proceeding, you're going to be in the situation of dual scenarios where you are thinking about whether DWR, for example, whether DWR is likely to put that additional water to beneficial use in the future, either with or without the Delta Conveyance Project. And you're gonna have two scenarios. And so you have it there too. And that doesn't mean that one way might be, you know, simpler than the other. But do you think that there is any, I mean, do you think what they should be ordered? Or do you think there is merit to conducting the proceedings with some degree of combination, sort of running in parallel?
I'd have to think more about some degree of combination, but I think that the extension petition certainly should not wait for later, after the DCP is decided. It kinda scared me a little bit when we said that DWR will agree they won't exceed the historical use through the North diversions until the time extension petition is decided. Well, it's gonna take 20 years to build this thing. So that would kinda assume we're not gonna get addition, an answer for another 20 years. I don't think that can be right. I think also that there is some degree of complication since, well, the permit extension could be requested even if there were no DCP. Right? They could, they could, they could request that. So it's always possible, after you grant a permit extension, that we're gonna apply for a DCP or they could apply for something else as well. So you've always got a complication, but something has to go first. And I think it's a whole, it's very much simpler to do the extension first. Because you have less, less of a range of possibilities that you have to consider in the extension proceeding. If it goes first, then you would have to consider in the DCP proceeding if it goes first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Mr. Buscher.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kenzie. Just a couple thoughts on the supplemental information issue and zooming out a little bit. Right, but as I take the rulings thus far, right, the supplemental information was necessary because we have this multi-scenario approach. And the multi-scenario approach is necessary because DWR's deadline to put water to beneficial use expired 15 years ago. And at the time that you requested the information and identified this multi-scenario approach for this proceeding, there was no pending extension request. But now we have a pending extension request or filed extension request, if not noticed and pending yet. And in that proceeding, right, whenever it is deemed to be complete and noticed, the board and the hearing officer and the protesting, any protesting parties can kind of properly address whether the 2009 deadline should be extended. And that's gonna involve kind of these questions of how much water was in fact put to use before that time. And so all of the, or most of the information that's requested in the supplemental information is gonna come up in that hearing process. Once those matters are resolved and the extension request is ruled upon, whether it is denied or granted or conditioned, as Mr. Brodsky notes, then the parties can turn to this proceeding without having to engage in the request for supplemental information and without having to engage in the multi-scenario approach. Because we'll have an answer to that question as to which world we're gonna be in. And I think that approach, right, not having experts testify about several different scenarios of the construction and use of the DCP benefits a clear record and a supportable decision by the board ultimately on these water right application. And ultimately, I mean, I kinda take DWR to be taking a similar position to what I'm describing, right? They say and contend that the supplemental information is relevant in the extension request and that they'll provide that information or something like it in that process. They just wanna move forward with this one first. And that gets everything backwards and out of order and leaves us stuck in multi-scenario approaches here where they aren't necessary. And so in the absence of the supplemental information and the absence of a determination on the extension request, I don't see how we can move forward with this proceeding as applied for by DWR and as it's been kind of managed thus far by the hearing officer in terms of the procedural rulings and the hearing issues that are relevant.
Thank you, Mr. Buscher. And I appreciate this collective conversation we're having where you give me ideas and then I have questions about them. You mentioned the degree to which this request for supplement, well, that the supplemental information will come up in the petitions for extension of time, that that will be an element. In thinking about timing, I mean, realistically, if we're gonna talk about conducting the petitions for extension of time proceeding, having a decision from the board and then going to this proceeding, that means we don't start this proceeding until at least 2027, right? Because we don't get a sequo document until 2006 sometime. We have to conduct the hearing. And then we have to have a draft decision. There's comments, we bring it to the board. I mean, best case sometime in 2027. And then starting this proceeding. So it's a significant, it's not a small amount of time. I mean, I know in water time, it's not very long. But it's a significant amount of time. I wonder as a an approach that may keep both proceedings moving forward, I'm thinking through the degree to which a hearing phase on the question about the overlap between the two, about the 2009 historical use, I'm putting that in shorthand, the subject of the supplemental information request, whether that could be combined into a hearing phase common to both. I realize it wouldn't solve the scenario problem, but it would inform the scenario problem. And I don't know if you have any thoughts about that now or we can, I'm throwing that out there to the group, we can come back to it.
I guess I have a couple of reactions to that. One, I'm not an engineer, so I take Ms. Carroll at her word that this is hard in terms of an engineering problem. But if DWR wanted to move forward on the existing schedule, it should have complied with the requests for supplemental information in December and January. And, you know, if that was impossible, I'm sympathetic to that, but I don't think we just plow ahead because it was harder than you anticipated it being, and we don't have the information. Second, I'm a little bit hesitant or concerned about phasing these proceedings until we have all of the underlying information. And, you know, I think we all persevered through the ITP phase of the site's proceeding. But there was a lot of initial testimony in that matter that was not relevant after the ITP was issued because like the conditions changed. And I don't wanna go through a whole bunch of proceedings here and then have something change in June and have, you know, several witnesses' testimony have to be redone and just have kinda endless shifting ground and phases of this proceeding. And, you know, I think that's my constructive proposal. I understand it's not necessarily the fastest one. But I think ultimately, right, getting to the end of this process with a sound record that the board can make an informed decision about, you know, that it's certainly possible that parties will litigate the outcome of. Doing that, once we have all of the underlying information and can be strategic and thoughtful about how to make sure that record is complete, is the most efficient way to do this, even if it seems like sitting here today, it's a little bit slower. Because if we go through a bunch of phases or a bunch of iterations or a bunch of false starts, right, and pieces get challenged in court or pieces get approved or disapproved by the state board, you know, we may be back here far later than 2027 to restart this process.
Thank you.
And I guess the last thing I'll say, I mean, we've raised these objections in this proceeding and in the site's proceeding. It is really hard, as Ms. Chowder explained at the outset, to have overlapping giant infrastructure projects going through water rights proceedings in the same watershed that have, you know, a big impact on the Delta and the San Francisco Bay and the watershed for EJ and tribal groups, for nonprofits generally. For many of the local government agencies, I would imagine that it's hard as well. And so adding a third proceeding into that that is all overlapped with each other, I don't think is the way forward, right? I think the way forward is to be patient, get all the information, and then go forward in a strategic and thoughtful way.
Thank you, Mr. Buscher. Ms. Meserve.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Kenzie. I mean, I think, first of all, just to speak to the condition that DWR suggested in its January 21st submittal and then has referred to again in its submittal today. It appears to be asking the hearing officer to conduct a hearing on a hypothetical project that may or may not come to fruition or may not be able to be used at all. So it's even more extreme, I think, than what the hearing officer put together in a series of writings beginning in the fall, where you were trying to set up how you could go forward with the change petition under the impression that there wouldn't be a petition for extension filed at all, maybe for a number of years, as DWR had previously represented to all of us. So, you know, looking at the case in chief presented by DWR in January, that speaks to the project, I think, that's described in the Environmental Impact Report that apparently would allow for this flexibility that we keep hearing about being so important to DWR and their contractors, where they're able to, you know, use the North Delta or the South Delta and they're not capped at a prior use number that we had kind of been discussing during the time when it didn't appear that there would be a petition for extension to be processed by the Water Board or the AHO in the near term. So I'm concerned that the way that it's being put forth now by DWR, you are actually being asked to process a petition for change on a matter that is not ripe for review and that would be potentially a complete waste of time by all of us, including DWR and their contractors because they're saying here that they wouldn't divert water unless they got the extension. So it begs the question, why would we go through that years-long process to talk about the ideas in the EIR and in the flexible operations plan? You know, and so in terms of like, and the other thing I note about, you know, having tried to get a sense of what the case in chief is, is that DWR has specifically avoided all of the questions that the hearing officer put as hearing issues going back several months, they're not new, that were required to be addressed by DWR's case in chief. So, and DWR has put no information in the case in chief regarding its own view of its water rights, except that it has a somewhat unlimited and uncapped amount of water that it could divert from the Delta, that it could divert all the way up to the face value of the permits. So I think that's why we're, protesters are so concerned about going forward under the current conditions. And I would note that I understand there's a bunch of pressure to move this forward and that it is a priority of the state. But all this is not the Water Board's fault, probably. It's certainly not the protesters' fault. DWR is the one that allowed its petition for extension from 2009 DWR is the one that decided that allowed its petition for extension from 2009 to be left unaddressed. And then eventually it withdrew that petition and then it asked for a minor change instead in the summer of 2024. And then, you know, so, and then it said, well, it's not going to do it for a few years, so could we please go forward anyway? And then, Hearing Officer and all of us went through a lot of thought to try to come up with how that might be possible. These delays are because of DWR. DWR is the one that hasn't exercised due diligence. So it's not on us that this has occurred. And this is a very important, obviously very important to the Delta. And very, these two things, the extension and the change petition are inextricably connected. And I would hate to see us, you know, go forward as DWR has suggested, just pretending like the petition will get, for extension gets dealt with later. And obviously, DWR and the people paying for this, who are talking about the investments they're making in the planning process and the millions of dollars just this morning, you know, 32 million, 50 million, whatever the numbers are. Like, it's for them, it's supposed to be for something. DWR is saying it'd be willing to go through this change petition process that we've laid out as, you know, ignoring part of your hearing issues, not knowing whether it could use those diversions, it just doesn't make sense. So, I mean, I think that's why, to answer your question about what, how to go forward, you know, these two things, now that they've been brought forward at the same time, need to be related together and sequenced in a way that makes sense. And maybe that's, you know, phasing as was suggested, but the petition for extension needs to be addressed first. And then the case in chief around the change needs to actually relate to the amount of water that DWR is saying it could divert to the facility. Otherwise, what are we talking about here? And one last thing is, well, DWR is saying, well, it'll be like 2027 before it could complete this new environmental review. Look, we all know, those of us who work in Sequo, there's a lot of different ways to do environmental review. And it appears to me that DWR is using the, the kind of threat, the length of time to do environmental review kind of against, you know, the common sense of trying to integrate these two related proceedings together and sequence them properly. Because we all know there's tiered environmental review, there's a huge environmental document out there. Obviously, it's in litigation, but it addresses many of the same issues that the extension petition, EIR, if there was one, would address. So, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to, for efficiency under Sequo. And it doesn't appear to me that DWR is trying to use those or suggest those and instead would like to take a very long time on that as a reason why we can't address what should have been addressed in 2009. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meserve. And I just wanted to, thank you for all your comments. As a point of clarification, really for everyone to make sure I'm on the same page as DWR, and we all understand this. My understanding of the term proposed by DWR with respect to, that was intended to address the supplemental information request, was that DWR would not operate the Delta Conveyance Project until the board had made a decision on the petitions for extension of time, whether, regardless of whether the decision was approve or deny. So, they would not operate the Delta Conveyance Project, but if the board said, if the board denied the petitions for extension of time, they would plan to then operate them and it is their position. And that's why I asked Ms. Carol specifically, it is their position that the board ought to approve the change petitions, even if the board were to deny the petitions for extension of time. I think that's what, I just wanted to make sure that that's our understanding of the term, so that we're talking about the same things.
Thank you. I mean, and maybe that's what they intend, and I'm sure Ms. Carol can clarify, but I guess that begs the question. What would that scenario be? Up to what point? If DWR won't tell us what that volume is, then how would we know what we are? And then how is the testimony that DWR has put forth in its case in chief relevant to that? I don't think it is.
Thank you, Ms. Meserve. Mr. Cho.
Thank you. Ms. Meserve stole some of my thunder, so I won't belabor the point, but I do just want to nail home the, the, the central point that I gathered from what she said, which I think it's important that we remember what outcome DWR is seeking by, by, by requesting that we move forward with the hearing at this time. It's seeking an authorized change in its points of diversion to add the new DCP PODs. It's term that it's proposed as a way to provide assurances says it won't divert from those new intakes at those new points of diversion until after a change petition or a petition for extension of time has been acted on. It, it begs the question, then, why are we going forward with this, as Ms. Meserve so eloquently put? But I think it's, it's really important that, you know, because there is a question that the HO and the board ultimately need to decide on, which is whether approving a petition that is so hypothetical is within the public interest is tantamount. And going to the, the sequencing portion of this, we're, we're back where we started in having to analyze multiple scenarios, the, the dual scenario that you, you described or a range of scenarios. Because the condition that DWR has provided, and it envisions potential scenarios where DWR might be limited to what it was diverting in 2009. And the whole point of this project is to be, have additional capacity to potentially divert up to a million acre feet more water for export to its customers. I, I don't know that it could accomplish that if the petition for extension of time is denied, but it's impossible for us to tell because we don't know what annual volumes of water DWR has diverted up until the point of its expired permits. And then lastly, you know, the, the joint motion for cancellation that, that North Delta was also signatory to requested that the petition be canceled because DWR twice failed to provide supplemental information in response to a lawful order by this AHO underwater code 10701.3. 10701.4 says the board shall cancel the petition unless good cause is shown. And to date, I don't believe that DWR has demonstrated good cause to avoid that outcome that the water code requires. So, and then lastly, you know, I think that the, I'll leave that at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. I'm just going to push on this point a little bit and thinking through, let's say. First of all, I'm not sure the AHO actually has delegated authority to cancel the petitions, but that's another, I mean, the board, the board is, the board has authority to do it. If there's a failure to respond to a request for information of this nature. But what would that look like? I mean, so the, the petitions would be canceled and then DWR submits additional information. Let's say the information comes in in May and then we renotice the petitions. I mean, it, there is a pretty good possibility that this would just be an exercise in redoing what we've already done, isn't that right?
That's potentially right, assuming that supplemental information is provided and, and DWR is eventually ready to proceed. The parties of the, the joint motion did suggest in the alternative that the hearing officer hold this matter in advance until that supplemental information is provided. DWR asserted in its, in its filing of the petition for extension of time, I believe, as well as this morning, that that supplemental information could be available by May of 2025, which is not that far off in the future. It, it seems premature to, to have to analyze those dual scenarios and, and for the parties to go through cross-examination of DWR's witnesses under, without that, that information ahead of that time that DWR believes it can provide the information.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cho. Ms. Chowdery.
Yeah, thank you, Officer Kenzie. I just also wanted to raise, DWR's extension, petition for extension of time, it asks for a development deadline of December 31st, 2085. So that's a good 60 years ahead of where we are right now. And I just wanted to point out, adding a year, two years between this proceeding and the extension of time proceeding, it seems like a very limited impact in the scope of the proposed deadline that DWR is imagining for this project.
Thank you. Mr. Schutz.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. Operating for a moment on the the hypothetical that we might hold this in abeyance until important information is available. First of all, it does seem to me that the information that you requested and that has not been provided and that's been promised by May is essential for this hearing for the public interest determinations and reasons that other people have mentioned. I will say that I requested that information in 2010. So it's not as though DWR has not had the opportunity to present that information and, and to, to develop it. I was told then that it was too hard and too complicated and I didn't even know if at that point I would ever get it. It does seem like it's possible and that abeyance, at least until that information is available is minimal. In addition, on Friday, the ITP was issued for the Delta Conveyance Project. The, on quick review, because it's a long document and I haven't been able to fully digest it, but it does appear to me that the diversion criteria or the operations criteria are different than what than, than the basis for testimony that DWR has already assembled, which was based on the ITP application, as I understand it. So if in fact, we were to obey this proceeding until DWR provided the use information, it would also provide DWR the opportunity to have its witnesses revise as needed their testimony so that they were testifying regarding the, what appears to be actual diversion criteria that are now sort of the order of the day, rather than going through a second phase to see if there's updates or see how that changes. And, and frankly, to get some presentation by DWR of what it is is being proposed and in the ITP. So I think it would also accomplish that secondary purpose of making this hearing much more efficient and not requiring all of us to go through the cross-examination phase, ask for supplemental testimony from the, the petitioner regarding the new diversion criteria, go through some other phase on that. And in the event that you don't determine that that's the best course of action, I'd suggest something you might put on the agenda in the short term is how you're going to handle the ITP and the changes that came about from that and whether that would be sequenced prior to cases in chief from the Protestants or how that would work. So, those are my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schutz. The ITP is a good point and, and I did. I, I should have noted that, that did, was released and I believe has been brought into as an AHO exhibit, under the assumption that we will be referring to it in this proceeding in some ways. You raised the point about the extent to which DWR's existing case in chief testimony may need to be revised to address the operation criteria in the ITP as opposed to the ITP application. I don't, and I'm hesitating because I don't have it in front of me and I don't mean to misrepresent this, but when I reviewed the testimony, especially the wa, the modeling testimony from DWR, it's my understanding that the witnesses' testimony did not include operational criteria from the ITP application. I think the witnesses, at least one explicitly said this modeling did not include the operation criteria from the ITP application, which raises different questions, but led me to the, to the thought that it's not the late submission of the ITP. You know, it's not that we're getting the ITP later than we thought is not going to affect DWR's testimony because they didn't address the ITP application criteria anyway, which
May I respond?
Yes, please.
I, I did not have a chance yet to review the modeling testimony, but I did review some of the biological testimony and some of that testimony was based on what was filed in the ITP application, at least as it was described within that testimony.
Thank you, that's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Schutz. Oh, good. Ms. Carol, would you like to respond to any or all of our conversations so far?
Well, I think I'm going to limit it to the recent conversation just for ease. We were talking about the ITP that was just issued and that included refinements to the bypass flows and the changes that we aren't, that we anticipate to our testimony is not very complicated. So we should be able to submit our updated testimony and information by Friday.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Carol. I think at this point, we have certainly, I think, blended this discussion about the request for supplemental information into a discussion about the petitions for extension of time. But to be fully transparent, is there anyone else who would like to chime in on these issues? I really appreciate this discussion, it's been quite productive and I appreciate the acknowledgement of the need for, you know, construct a path forward. But would anyone else like to comment? Ms. Carol, is that a residual hand? Would you like to chime in again?
Um, yeah, I'd like to chime in on issues if possible. There doesn't need to be a delay in the schedule. We understand that there's an awkwardness in the coordination of these proceedings and we've asked for the proceedings to be coordinated. We want to do what we can to make the proceedings as efficient as possible and not have to rehear issues in both of the proceedings for everyone. We, we believe that we can talk about this in our case in chief for the CPod hearing and it can be coordinated with the time extension hearing, as you have suggested. We also believe that DCP offers independent utility and that there is in the public interest and that can be showed without the supplemental information and we've done that with our case in chief. And then I just want to go back. Oh, and you know, our case in chief, we've provided a conservative analysis, you know? We're showing the infrastructure that's needed and that we'll need to show in time extension. We're showing an analysis that uses the maximum flows that we could. So anything under that will be even more restrictive than what we've already analyzed and put out there for our case in chief.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. With that, my intent would be to turn to a discussion about logistics. I think we should have this conversation because as I said, it will come up regardless about how to run the case in chief portion of DWR's case in chief portion, portion of this hearing. And I have a couple of topics that I've identified. I guess before we, we, we move on to the logistics part of this, are there any more comments on what we've talked about so far? I'll give one last, one last call. Mr. Brodsky. Do have to come off mute, I think.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As far as I know, unless I missed something, a notice of preparation for SEQA EIR for the time extension hasn't been issued yet. And I, I don't see why not. I mean, I, you know, that should be gotten going as fast as possible. Also, in terms of the reasoning that it's going to take a long time to be able to consider the extension of time. And so therefore we should get going on the DCP hearings first. And part of the reason that that is going to take a long time to do the sequel process. I, I just note on that, that the board has proceeded on petitions on a draft EIR. That the, the final EIR is not necessary, that Water Fix began on a draft. So, I mean, the time extension petition can be gotten going. It's just, right now, it's just sitting there and it's complicating things.
And it's complicating things and, you know, the NLP should be issued and they should get going on.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Mr. Wright. Mr. Wright, it looks like you need to come off mute. Or it may be an errant hand. But there we go. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. It's to, I would just try to add a bit to what's been said. But it's really almost nothing that needs to be known is known at this time in terms of moving forward with the hearing. We don't have the required information to determine whether this project could arguably be in the public interest if the petition for extension of time is denied. That's a big deal. We know that the Water Board Staff Report issued in September of 2023 said the outflow standards are far below what is needed. We know that the Bay Delta Plan, badly out of date, is in the process of being updated, but hasn't been updated yet. We know that there's operational criteria set forth in the ITP that was just issued last week. It just seems it's impossible to have an intelligent proceeding determining whether the Delta Conveyance Project is in the public interest in absence of all of these things. And then in addition to that, we have the January 24th new executive order issued back in Washington by the president, which basically attacks California's laws and water plans. It really this stuff is like cumulative. It has collective impacts. This proceeding should not go forward at this time until these additional things are gathered and put in place. Thank you. That's all I have to add.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I did have a follow up question as I'm thinking about this for Ms. Carol, for you. In listening to the policy statement by Secretary Profoot this morning, he outlined a number of benefits of the project. I think these benefits are also listed in the petition for extend, I'm sorry, the petitions for change themselves, I think, in the supporting documentation related to the way the project would address climate change, seawater intrusion, the risk of earthquake, some elements that are that are related to water supply but aren't necessarily linked to an increase of diversions through the Delta. And I was wondering where his statement today is not, it's non evidentiary. Is information about those benefits in the EIR or where could I find? I were to look at DWR's case in chief, is that the the place to look for that information? Do you know?
I'm trying to think. I think a lot of what's in the EIR is qualitative. I can say that the department issues a delivery capability report and there's an analysis there about climate change and regulatory and operational considerations that impact deliveries of the state water project, which the DCP would be part of. But we can make sure that that information is included.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Moore.
Oh, since the subject has come up, I just want to briefly note that the subject of whether the EIR's analysis of things like climate change and sea level rise and emergency preparedness is legally adequate. And whether the DCP helps or in fact hurts with this are matters that are the subject of you know, multiple pending lawsuits. I'm, I don't want to get sidetracked from the things that that have come up that are within the board's responsibility, but because the general subject has come up, I just wanted noted that that what DWR is saying in its CIR or presents here as its point of view are not the only points of view.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that. All right. I think with that, I would like to go ahead. Well, let's go ahead. It's 2:37. I don't think the logistics will take very long, but I think it would be appropriate to take a brief break. Let's go ahead and plan to break and reconvene at 2:47 and we'll talk about procedure. Thank you. See you shortly.
I'll look to the court reporter. Are you ready for us to go back on the record?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, with that brief break, I we can pick up with some of the logistics that I wanted to to talk about. Hopefully it won't take too long. First, I I wanted to uh express my appreciation for the joint update about the site visit proposal. I understand that there's been limited time to meet and confer and really get into the details of that, but I appreciate the efforts by the parties on that. And my intent would be to um ask you to continue to meet and confer as appropriate. And when you have a a concrete proposal or you get to the point where there is an impasse, um then to come back and we can have a conversation about how to move that uh about what to do next with respect to the site visit and that you will continue to talk about the method, whether it will be in person or or, you know, a physical site visit or a a virtual. And then related to that as appropriate, the logistics surrounding transportation um process, et cetera. But with that, is there any, does anyone want to comment on or provide any other updates on the site visit proposal? Ms. Lacy.
Thank you so much, Officer Kenzie. Um, I I just wanted to um second what the North Delta um Water Agency said and note that we do disagree with DWR's statement that based on the discussions with the Protestants, um that the proposed site visit is really an extensive tour of the Delta and the state water project. What um the Protestants discussed were proposed locations for site visit, including land and water tours pertinent to the impacts of the DCP, which includes locations associated with the Delta and the state water project. And we do believe a a physical site visit is essential for the AHO and the parties to appreciate the scale and the scope of the Delta Convenance Project and its impacts on the Delta and the other affected agencies. So thank you for allowing us additional time to discuss it.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Galindo.
Thank you, hearing Officer Kenzie. There is two different issues that I would like to touch on, one about the party groupings and one about the inside visit. Um if this is an appropriate time to talk about those.
Please, go ahead.
Um so I'll start first with the party groupings. If this proceeding goes forward, which we believe would be premature, given that we have not yet clarified the final hearing issues, we would like to reiterate the request we made in our hearing management statement regarding party groupings. We asked that our group be made up of our clients and our co-protestants, California Indian Environmental Alliance, Golden State Salmon Association, and San Francisco Baykeeper without any other parties. If our requested party grouping is not possible, we ask that our clients in the California Indian Environmental Alliance be put in their own group alone without SCD, HCC, or Delta Legacy. I would like to emphasize that our tribal clients are sovereign government governments and should be grouped as such due to their unique interests as sovereign sovereign bodies and unique sovereign relationship with the state of California. If our requested grouping is not possible, we ask that our clients be grouped with California Indian Environmental Alliance because as an NGO that represents the interests of California tribes, CIEA and our clients share similar interests in regard to environmental justice, tribal cultural resources, and tribal land rights. However, to reiterate, our preferred grouping would be our clients alongside with their co-protestants, CIEA, Golden State Salmon Association, and San Francisco Baykeeper. Um and as an aside and with apologies for the delay, I would like to note that we will be reporting back to GSSA. Um I would also like to invite my client, Ms. Barrigan Farija from Restore the Delta to speak more on this issue at this time.
And and I'm on which issue, the the party groupings?
Yes, please. And then I'll.
And well, let me, although I've always loved to hear from you, my inclination was to grant the, I read the request and it seemed appropriate to me and my inclination would be to 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 do that, to separate you out as requested. I, would it be fair to say that you have um discussed this and have the support of the the San Francisco Mr. Buscher and others who are you're proposing to be grouped with? Is that correct?
Yes, here, Officer Kenzie and Mr. Buscher wants to clarify.
Oh, I I I agree. We support that request. Thank you.
Well, I think that's fine, and I'm happy to hear from your client, but I I think that's a that's a request that I was intending to grant and make that that separation.
Great. Then it's okay, with uh with you, Ms. Barrigan, would you like to speak or should I move on?
No, we're done. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um so I would also like to talk about the insight um visits and reiterate our position. So our position is strongly that the site visit should be in person and not online. I have three main points that I would like to make um in regard to this. So first, the State Water Resources Control Board will not be able to adequately assess the impacts of the project without being in person because this project is inherently tied to the land. As shown by the large number of Protestants on this call, this proposed project will have life-altering impacts on millions of peoples across both Northern, Central, and Southern California. Furthermore, for all of our clients and specifically our tribal clients, the land is itself sacred and this essence just cannot simply be conveyed over a virtual tour. Suggesting that the sanctity of this land can be conveyed by a flyover is frankly disrespectful for tribal clients and community organizations whose lives and livelihoods will be permanently impacted by this project. My second point is that we also appreciate Officer Kenzie that you yourself have stated multiple times that you are not personally familiar with this region or with these communities. We strongly believe that physically seeing the areas this project will impact in terms of both people, species, and physical space will be integral to fully understanding the project's impact. Furthermore, due to the vast number of communities who would be impacted by this project, community dynamics among interested parties are too complex to understand through a virtual visit. A site visit inherently requires talking to people in the community who will be affected by this project, and it's important that these social dynamics be considered during the visit. My third point is that in order to comply with California's environmental justice priorities, it is integral that our elders be able to adequately communicate their traditional ecological knowledge during the site visit. However, our elders' abilities to communicate their unique viewpoints will be impeded if they are forced to communicate virtually using methods that they're not comfortable with. As an additional note, while we thought that DWR was conferring in good good faith with the meet and confer process, we are really surprised to hear in their February eleventh letter that they are now firmly opposing an inside visit and portraying our request for an in-person site visit as quote "an extensive tour of the Delta and state water project." We would like to reiterate that we are by no means asking for an extensive tour, and we are not opposed to DWR being involved in planning the site visit. We would also not object to DWR organizing a virtual visit to an in-person site if they believe that that is important. Our main ask has and continues to be that the majority of the site visit occur in person because this will be the only way for the hearing office to fully understand the scope of the project's impacts and to give the impacted communities and tribes the respect they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments and and encourage the continued discussion and in the meet and confer process and and amongst the Protestants yourselves about a a concrete proposal. So thank you. Are there any other comments on the site visit issue? And then next I will turn to um the party groups and time limits. All right, so I'm, it was not my intent today to make any ruling on on specific time limits. Um, I just wanted to comment that I had, I've read the case management statements. Um, of course, I'm keeping in mind that I think their last count was seventy-nine parties to this proceeding, so uh there there needs to be some kind of time limits on cross-examination so that we can get through this. I understand that that the, you know, many of the questions will be asked, the order of cross-examination matters, right? Who goes first and who goes later? Uh with respect to the the Protestants and the cross-examiners, I don't have, it's really up to you how you would like to order uh yourselves in terms in terms of cross-examination, particularly within the groups. Uh my intent would just be to have some kind of default order, and it can change from phase to phase. It doesn't, that's fine, just a default order so that I can ru- run the proceeding and know where we're going next. Um but I understand that there may be reasons to change. I don't know if there's a preference for certain parties to uh cross-examine first. Generally speaking, you know, there there's more work for the ones who cross-examine first because get through the bulk of the questions, and if you come later, a lot of the questions have already been answered. Um but I am open to proposals with respect to that. I don't, we don't need to go in the same order every time, and I, and the order of cross-examination does not need to reflect the order in which the Protestants will present their cases in chief. Uh we can, we can make that decision later as well. Uh again, I just want to have a default understanding of of where we go. I believe I'm going to conduct this in a similar way to how we've conducted the site reservoir proceeding, which is to have what we're calling a chess clock approach. I realize because we're in phases, um DWR's case in chief phase is is separate than the Protestants case in chief phase, so I would have separate time limits for those that wouldn't be blocked together necessarily. I I that would be to, we don't have the Protestants case in chief yet, so I just can't make that kind of estimate of what's appropriate for for time limits for cross-examination. But that would be my intent, that I would give time limits which would include cross-exam, objection, whatever comes up during this phase of the hearing, and then for DWR, their time limit, which I think I've already expressed, was sixteen hours would be, which I think is far more, it sounds like, than they may need, but would be opening statement. Uh presentation of summaries of direct testimony by their witnesses, and then the opportunity for objections and those types of things, although I do hope to keep those to a minimum, and we'll talk about evidentiary objections in a a moment. But with those thoughts in mind and and the idea that um whether whether we proceed now in March or whether we proceed down the road, that we would be, we would have a number of days that approximate what I've already put out there, and we would get through the this um case in chief portion of the hearing within that period of time um to the best of our ability, so that there will need to be some limits on cross-exam. And with those thoughts out there, are there, is there anyone who would like to comment on additional factors that I should be thinking about when setting time limits and um well, essentially time limits, I think the groupings have been, I will break down the groupings as requested, so that that part we've taken care of. Mr. Buscher.
Thank you. Um. So one, I I appreciate the approach um as I heard it to perhaps allow for different parties to go in different orders depending on the witness. I think there is a a pretty diverse array of protesting parties um with right, often overlapping, but sometimes very different focuses or interests and, right, the most efficient way is going to be for that most interested party to go first with that witness, and I'm happy to endeavor to work with my, you know, other protesting parties and and our colleagues to keep the hearing officer informed, so it doesn't feel random and ad hoc. But I think that flexibility is, will ultimately be valuable um to get through efficient cross-examinations of all of the witnesses. Um and the second point I would make um I I think a one-hour case in chief summary presentation is really long. Um and if we're gonna look for ways to make this a more efficient process, um I think that, you know, limiting those summary presentations to something more along the lines of what happened in sites where the, you know, most of them were between ten and twenty minutes. Um I I think that would go a long way to speeding this along uh rather than having an hour for each of those. Um and then the last point I I would make in terms of setting time limits for cross-examination. I I I don't know whether to read DWR's request as a witness-by-witness hour-long clock for the parties or whether, right, that is just a proxy for a total amount of time, but there are certainly going to be witnesses that we're going to want to spend more than an hour with. Um and certainly going to be witnesses where we're going to spend substantially less than that, and so figuring out how to allocate that time reasonably so that all of the parties have an opportunity to um air the issues they believe are necessary in this proceeding, um I think is important. I think it works pretty well with the sites um process. The parties were generally pretty efficient. I would expect that to be the case here as well.
And I agree. Thank you, Mr. Buscher, and I agree with that with respect to the the site's proceeding. I think it worked well. Um and yes, I'm open to flexibility, but witness by witness in terms of the order of of cross. I I can understand the the benefits of that. Um Ms. Carol, I'll I'll turn to you next, and I do want to reiterate, I'm I'm sticking with the sixteen hours for DWR because I said that early on, and I'm I'm true to my word. However, uh it seems highly unlikely to me that for most, I I realize some of the modeling testimony is is fairly complex and and a a longer summary may be appropriate, but I will give you my commitment that I will have read the written testimony in advance of the proceeding. Um and generally, it it seems likely that a a shorter summary would be most efficient for everyone involved. Really, the hearing process is about cross-exam because um we do have the testimony in writing. Uh it is somewhat, you know, helpful to sometimes get a summary orientation of where we are when the witness before we go into cross-exam, but that's really what it is, is like the the flyover view, which is quite helpful. Um and I'm sure you've you've thought about those things, but Ms. Carol, do you have other comments on the time limit and other related issues?
No, and I won't quibble over the sixteen hours with you at all. So um my question is really for our opening, and if there was a restriction on the time for that. Um I know that's part of sixteen hours, but I didn't know if there was a limit.
No separate restriction, that is up to you.
Okay, excellent. And then the only other ask that I have is in this more flexible arrangement of um having a shifting list of who goes first and cross is having enough notice for us to make sure that the appropriate witness is available um for cross-examination and having that in advance to make sure that they're there to appear.
Well, we would proceed in the order, have you provided me an order? Now I can't, now this is, have you given me an order of proposed order of witnesses? I believe you have. No, I mean, no, you haven't, because it's March twenty-fourth. That's right. I'm crossing over my proceedings, so I apologize. Uh at some point, I will ask you to provide a proposed order of of your witnesses, so you will be aware when those witnesses are testifying. It would just be that the cross-examiner uh may not be in the same order for each witness. That makes sense.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will add on the order of witnesses, we started with the the sites proceeding to include on our AHO webpage a calendar which shows the hearing days and the expected witnesses I um who will be testifying on that day. I don't want this to become a a restriction, but it's an intent to be as transparent as possible about where we are as we progress through the hearing. We're going to attempt to do the same thing with this proceeding that where we'll have a um a calendar on the webpage. Once the witnesses have testified, what we've done is to put a very brief description of what the testimony was about, and then a link to the appropriate um YouTube video uh for your convenience. It's a helpful way to, if if someone is jumping in and out of the proceeding, the intent is for those parties who may not be able to participate in every day to be able to efficiently jump to the particular topics that are of interest. And then also to forecast to the best of our ability when we will be hearing from which witnesses. Um again, I don't want that to be a binding limitation, but we will try to update that regularly so that we can give, you know, what's coming uh forecast, and I welcome your feedback as we go through this. It's a, it's a new process for us as to what works best and is most helpful to everyone involved. Are there other comments on time limits or party groupings or anything else related to cross-exam? Mr. Brodsky?
Yes, thank you. Just to reiterate, I've made this point before on cross-examination. You know, there should be an estimated time that an attorney is going to take to cross-examine a particular witness and uh you know, should say, these are the areas I intend to cover. This is how long I expect it to take and a goal of a certain time limit. But you know, it has to be recognized that on cross-examination, experts are trying to avoid answering the question. Their goal is to avoid making an admission. And so if there's a, if there's a hard time limit and the witness is being evasive, you you know, you need to not allow them to adopt this strategy of running out the clock. And you know, that that was our experience very much in Waterfix where, you know, a number of times uh the hearing officer had to jump in and say, look, why don't you just give the obvious answer to the question? You're being evasive. So if you have a time limit on the one end, you know, the 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 hearing officer also has to be vigilant in not allowing the witness to stonewall and evade answering the question. And and you know, and it's hard to say exactly sometimes when when an expert, you ask a question and that of an expert and the actress says, well, it depends on this, this, and this. Sometimes that's legitimate, but at a certain point it becomes evasive. I I just want to flag that again.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky, and I completely uh understand and agree with that. I'm sure everyone has, you know, we all are aware of that. Um the time limits aren't, yes, intended to be to provide structure as we go forward. There are certainly opportunities for flexibility. If there's a particularly evasive witness, I will one, do my best to move things along, and two, you know, there's a possibility I can give you the cross-examining party time back in recognition that this was particularly um challenging line of questioning to get through, but it was a productive line of questioning, so that I have, I will keep those things in mind, and we will have flexibility to to deal with those as they come up um within our general, our general structure. I'll look to, are there any other comments on this? Um oh, I did want, I had a specific question for San Luis and Delta Mendota Water Authority, if I still have a representative on. You had raised a a question in your case management statement, just I think as a matter of clarification, and I about your opportunity to cross-examine witnesses, and I just wanted to make sure I understand it. And I, it seems like it's an easy question, but I thought I could respond. Do I have, I don't recall our representative from San Luis and Delta Mendota, but if you can.
Yeah, yes, Daniel O'Hanlon for San Luis Delta Mendota Water Authority, and and I I've made this available.
Great. What did you mean? How can I help?
Uh, well, I, we just, we're not included in the group of uh folks cross-examining during DWR's case in chief, and and that's certainly appropriate. We don't oppose the project and DWR has committed that uh CVP deliveries won't be adversely affected by the project, but I just wanted to make the point that we do have an interest in what conditions might be imposed on the project, especially, you know, likely in response to conditions requested by the Protestants. And if they do impose conditions that are request conditions, rather, that would result in adverse effects on the CVP or could do so, we would win an opportunity to cross-examine. Um there are witnesses offered in support of those conditions, and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, again, it's appropriate not to include us in the folks cross-examining DWR, but scope of proceedings could change if things change down the future. I just wanted to make the point that that we've been quiet so far today because our interest is fairly limited and narrow, but I did want to make sure that we have, we will have that opportunity to cross-examine at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hanlon, and thank you for that clarification. Um that is exactly, I didn't include you in the list because I understood your interest to be generally speaking somewhat aligned with the project. But certainly I would intend to to allow you time to cross-examine Protestants, witnesses as appropriate as I would with any other party who is uh generally aligned with the project, that that those parties will have uh cross-exam, a block of cross-exam time when we get to that that phase of the hearing. So thank you for following up on that and making sure we're all on the on the same page.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on um time limits or groups or cross-exam or anything related to that? Next, I wanted to talk briefly about evidentiary objections, and all of this I'm going to write down so that we, to the best of my ability, um our understanding and where I am. Um and and that will be included in a future procedural ruling. With respect to evidentiary objections, my, and I'll try to lay this out as clearly as possible, but you can ask questions during the hearing, but my intent is to allow written evidentiary objections at any time with the caveat that I probably won't address those until after we've proceeded through the hearing phase. Um there may be exceptions if there is truly irrelevant some written testimony, and it would, we would expend an undue amount of time dealing with it, then I will try to consider those upfront as an efficiency for all of us, but very likely I'm going to defer acting on evidentiary objections until afterwards because generally speaking, given the relaxed standards for evidence in these administrative proceedings, it generally makes more sense to just bring it all in um and then deal with it as a weight of the evidence type of issue. Uh but I will accept written up evidentiary objections um in advance. I would like to defer oral objections for the most part until DWR offers its exhibits into the evidentiary record at at the close of this phase of the hearing. Once we've heard from DWR's witnesses, once we've Once we've heard from DWR's witnesses, once we've completed cross examination, we will then go through the exercise where DWR will offer its exhibits into the evidentiary record. At that time, I will either have wanted your objections in writing, or you can make them orally at the time DWR offers its exhibits into evidence, and it doesn't need to be detailed. I just want to know the one word basis and the particular exhibits to which you're objecting, and that will be set in place. I will accept the remainder, I will accept the exhibits into the evidentiary record with the caveats that there are these outstanding objections. And then I will intend to deal with those objections after we've gone through this phase of the hearing. I will ask that for any oral objections, you provide them to me in writing later. I'll probably set a deadline about a week out from the close of our hearing phase for you to give me in writing any of those oral objections made on the day when DWR offers its exhibits into evidence. And I want them to be, please concise and in table format. I find that's much, much more efficient way for me to deal with evidentiary objections when there are so many that you'll submit them, and we can lay this out in more detail later, but submit them in table format where there's the objection, brief, brief basis, the particular exhibits, and then a column for responses so that the other parties can respond. And then a column for the ruling so that I can rule, and it goes along as efficiently as possible, given the number of parties and the number of exhibits we're going to have. That's my intent. I know that sounds a bit complicated. I think in practice it won't be as complicated as it sounds and as hard as it is to explain, but I'm certainly not trying to trick you, you know, get you in a bind where you don't raise the objection at the appropriate time. So as we go through the hearing, you feel free to ask when the appropriate time is to raise certain things. But that was what I was thinking would be the most efficient, so we don't have the need for oral objections throughout, other than obviously in cross exam and things like that, that's, that's appropriate time for an oral objection. Uh, but we won't need to deal with those objections throughout the proceeding. We'll deal with them generally speaking at the end. I will try to write that down in a more clear fashion, but are there any questions or comments about evidentiary objections at this point? With that explanation, that's my list of logistical issues, so I will look to the room. Does any party have any other logistical issues that you would like to raise today that we should address? Ms. Missouri?
Thank you, Hearing Officer. Um, you did ask us about our opinion regarding the transcripts, I believe. And in the management statement, I described how the site authority is making those transcripts available because it is a public agency, even though it had initially resisted doing so. And I think the same result, and maybe Hearing Officer doesn't want to order anything, but I think that that is a you know, a decent result, and given the amount of funding that the project has from the state and the federal, all the water contractors, et cetera. I don't think that it is an undue burden on DWR to provide the the transcripts, and that was done also, just as a reminder, in the Waterfix proceedings, DWR provided the transcript as well. And that makes the most sense. So I just wanted to put that out there. I did, although you haven't asked about this. I did pull up the printout of the Profoot statement, and it's a policy statement, and I just want to back up Mr. Moore that every single thing pretty much in this policy statement is subject to dispute. And so I would urge the Hearing Officer not to base the decision on what Mr. Profoot said in a policy statement. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Missouri. All right, let's go to Mr. Busher.
Uh, just one question. I heard Ms. Carol, I thought, reference supplemental testimony that would be provided maybe this Friday. I'm assuming that's limited to the ITP. I didn't know that we were expecting supplemental testimony. I'm just trying to get a sense for what the scope of that will be.
Ms. Carol, would you care to respond about ITP testimony and also the transcript, please? Or anything else? Third, anything else?
I'll do my best. With respect to the updated testimony, yes, it is to update the ITP. There is also one errata where we are adding a permit term that we had omitted. So I believe that's the extent of the provisions that we'll be providing. As to the court recorder transcripts, you know, we did say that we would be retaining a court recorder and their liability is through the sale of transcripts. We're aware that there's a Superior Court statute that prevents sharing of transcripts, but we're not sure how that would apply to this proceeding. And we do have a call to our court reporter if there's any clarification that they can provide. With respect to sites, we understand that they're providing those transcripts subject to a Public Records Act request. And I wanted to clarify that DWR did not pay for the transcripts in the Waterfix hearing. That was actually something paid for by the Water Board.
Thank you, Ms. Carol, and I was going to mention the same thing. It was my, my recollection that it was State Water Board that retained the court reporter for the Waterfix proceedings. And we, okay, Ms. Chowdhury, please.
Yeah, thank you, Officer Kenzie. Just quickly, I wanted to reiterate an issue raised in our comment letter. We would like to renew our objections to the AHO's decision to set deadlines requiring the simultaneous submission of comments on the hearing issues and submission by DWR of its case in chief evidence based on these same hearing issues. To address this, we're asking that you ensure the full and fair consideration of party comments by setting a deadline for supplementation now and pushing back ensuing deadlines accordingly. Uh, this would give all the parties adequate time to prepare and for protesters to submit their case in chief exhibits. And I have three main points to bring up on this issue. So first, and I know we've spoken about this at length, but I would just like to reiterate again the issue mentioned earlier, that the proper solution here would be to dismiss these proceedings or to hold these proceedings in advance. While the petition for extension of time is considered, this would allow things to just proceed in a logical order here. However, if the AHO is not inclined to grant these requests, what we would note is that the AHO's July thirty first notice initially provided three months between the two submission deadlines to allow the Hearing Officer to fairly consider and resolve requests to modify the hearing issues before the case in chief exhibits were due. And by collapsing these deadlines and allowing concurrent submissions, the AHO has effectively stated that it's operating on a presumption here that the hearing issues would not be like substantively modified regardless of concerns raised by the parties. Which brings me to my second point, which is that this acceleration of the timeline raises a concerning question just regarding how much weight is actually being given to our clients' concerns on a significant and important part of these proceedings. The change of these deadlines in the November eighteenth notice also raises an apprehension for us that these proceedings are being improperly expedited in a manner that undermines the thorough and impartial review of DWR's application. Third, collapsing these deadlines puts all parties apart from DWR in a reactionary position quite unnecessarily. If the hearing issues end up being amended and DWR has to amend their case in chief evidence in turn, that puts us in a position of needing to quickly respond to all of these changes when our, as I've mentioned, all our capacity is already limited. Uh, and this issue could be avoided entirely if the deadlines had proceeded in the appropriate logical order with that time in between. Uh, again, given that DWR's extension asks for an extension sixty years in the future, it doesn't seem necessary to move so urgently through these proceedings. DWR has alluded to these complicated intersecting deadlines as like awkwardness, but on our end, there are real and avoidable burden on our ability to fully participate and raise concerns from our clients. So for these reasons, we would like to ask you, Officer Kenzie, to set a deadline for supplementation now and push back the ensuing deadlines accordingly. Of course, also, you mentioned at the start that we wouldn't be discussing the substantive concerns regarding the proposed hearing issues today. So I won't go into that, but I would just point you back to our January twenty first comment letter to get the specifics of our concerns there.
Thank you, Ms. Chowdhury, and I, I did carefully read that comment letter and, and your other submittals. Thank you. Are there other comments on or questions about procedure that we should address today, Mr. Brodsky?
I just wanted to ask about cross examining in person versus virtually or hybrid. So if, if there are some particular witnesses that we feel it would benefit to come in person, have the witness come in person and be, be there in the same room. For example, if you're going to be showing the witness a lot of exhibits or complicated exhibits, something like that, is there wh- what are we thinking about doing about that?
Uh, you would be the first person in any, in any AHO proceeding who's ever asked for in, an in-person appearance. I, I believe by statute, I, you have a right to request that, and I have an obligation to consider that, and I certainly would. And I would want to, and I would offer that to any of the parties here, that that would be a consideration. And to the extent it's, it's efficient, we could seek to schedule something and offer a hybrid format. It is difficult to schedule physical space. That's the big constraint. And we have to do that in advance. So I, if that's something that is going to come up, I think what I'll probably need to do is set deadlines for those requests to be made in advance of the scheduled day so that we can plan accordingly, uh, if we are going to have an in-person element. And then also, it's going to depend in part on the witness availability and that kind of thing. So I guess my short answer to that is yes, that's certainly something we can talk about and I can, I would consider. But I would like to have a request as soon as possible so that we can adapt to that.
Okay.
And it's frankly something that just hasn't come up because of the, I think the conveni, normally the convenience of all parties is in, in favor of virtual, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to consider that.
Is, you know, the virtual is certainly tempting and it's, but, you know, in person can have a lot of benefits, but
I don't disagree in, in the appropriate time, so.
So request it well in advance and we'll consider it, I, I think is what I'm hearing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Schutz.
Sorry, hit the wrong button. Thank you. Hearing Officer Kenzie, you suggested that you're gonna, you've taken a number of matters under advisement that some things will be forthcoming at a later point. Can you give us some idea of the timeline that you have in mind for your next ruling or steps? Just because there are other things going on and it's helpful to us to the degree possible to be able to plan and and not have to scramble if something comes at a time when we have many other things going on. Thank you.
That's fair, Mr. Schutz. Thank you. Uh, my intent is to try to get something, a ruling on our next steps out by the end of the month, because I realize that you're preparing, March twenty fourth is coming up rapidly. And I want, I know it's not a lot of advance notice, but I understand that there's a burden on everyone involved. So that is my, that is my goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tabor.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Kenzie. Uh, I'm curious what the authority is for the late submittal of additional testimony by DWR this Friday and whether that submittal will be conditional based on your ruling, which it sounds like is going to come after the submittal on Friday as to their ability to submit this additional testimony. Um, it's not clear to us what the, at this point, it's becoming less clear, let's say, as to what the rules are that are governing the deadlines for submittal of testimony and who is actually making those decisions about when things will be submitted, and we'd appreciate some clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Tabor. I mean, this is, of course, the first I've heard about, you know, supplemental testimony as well. So it's a good question. I think the thing to do is to receive the submission and then this would be an example of an evidentiary objection that would, that would be appropriate in advance so that I can deal with it. I think that it would be I mean, maybe you want to meet, meet and confer with DWR, that might be the most efficient way to deal with this to find out what we're talking about, but it seems to me the testimony needs to, to come in in the sense that you all see it and see the extent to which it's supplemental. Um, and the extent to which you do or don't have objection to it, and then I can consider what to do about it. Um, I have already, it has crossed my mind while we're sitting here, the reordering the witnesses or ordering the witnesses in a way or postponing testimony from certain witnesses to take into account that there have been some changes, but I don't know, given that we haven't, none of us have seen that yet, so.
I appreciate that again, and where I can see the importance of the testimony, and I don't know that we would object to it, but I'm starting to be uncertain about what the rules are they're governing here and allowing it. So I, I would appreciate that um, being clarified in a ruling on by, on the submittal.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tabor. Uh, Mr. Cho.
Thank you. This is also just a clarification question. Recognizing that there are a number of different balls being juggled right now. Does the forthcoming ruling encompass and a new subsequent request by DWR to narrow the scope of the, the hearing that the Hearing Officer already set forth in the November eighteenth and January seventeenth rulings? That, meaning the, the dual track, uh, the hearing issues and all that, are those all in play at this moment?
My intent is to issue an amended hearing notice that will address the hearing issues, and then that will be done. Does that respond to your question?
I hope so.
Okay. I mean, by done, I meant, uh, it will address, yes, I mean, it would address all of the comments received to date about uh, hearing issues, and we will have those set, you know, with, with the understanding that this is a long proceeding. There may be, but, but we would have the hearing issues in place, and that's what we'd be going forward with, and those would be clear. Thanks. Thank you. Ms. Carol.
Uh, I just wanted to address the comment about supplemental testimony and that we were submitting that based on prior statements in a pre-hearing conference where you had, you can recognize that the ITP had not been issued and that additional testimony might be necessary to make sure that that was included. So that's our intent there is to just make sure that we are addressing that prior issue raised.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. So I think that one is a, will, will, we may have to, I don't know that I'll have a chance to address that in the ruling that's forthcoming. We can let's see what the testimony is, and I will see what your objections, the, the protesters' objections may be, and we'll, and we'll go from there. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Uh, regarding the testimony, the, the additional filings that, that were mentioned uh, for, I believe, this Friday. Uh, we appreciate finding out that it's news to you as well as us. And what I wasn't clear on, uh, in what you just said is, I, I believe you referred to possible objections to that. And I'm not clear about what timeframe there would be for any of us who would want to submit uh, objections, uh, to, to what, uh, DWR, uh, may file. Is, is that something that would be set in the order that you are anticipating, uh, making by the end of the month? Or are you expecting, just in case you were expecting that something would need to go in before that, I figured we had uh, better find out what, what that expectation is.
Well, this is, this is a good, this is a fair question. This, um, what would you ask for in terms of a, a timeframe to file any evidentiary objection that you may have? Once you have a chance to actually see, assuming that the testimony comes in on Friday. You'll take a look at it. It may be appropriate actually to meet and confer with DWR because it may be something that is, I don't know if it's not objectionable, or you can just talk about a reordering of, of the witnesses. Of course, a lot of this is contingent on whether we go forward on March twenty fourth, and some of this may, you know, if we don't, then there may not be a need for this discussion. So do you have a proposal in terms of what an appropriate timeframe would be?
Well, not knowing anything yet about, you know, precisely what will be submitted other, other than, you know, DWR's own brief reference to it today. I'm a little hesitant to say, um, you know, we, we know that we can respond in X number of days, particularly as, um, uh, you know, others have mentioned there are quite a few other things going on. So if you were to ask me what my preference would be, I think it would be for, um, the order coming out at the end of the month to determine whether, you know, as, as Ms. Tabor referred to, just as an initial matter, it's appropriate given the, uh, prior due dates that were not met to be, uh, uh, incorporating this new information, but if it is, setting out the procedure and time for, uh, for objections to that.
That seems, that seems fair. Uh, so I will do that in any procedural ruling that, in the procedural ruling. That seems, that seems fair. Uh, so I will do that in any procedural ruling that, in the procedural ruling that is to come out. And I will, I will, in theory, will have seen the supplemental testimony at that point, so I can set something out for an opportunity for objections and there may be other matters. That need to be addressed. So I I can address that in that ruling with an appropriate. It, that ruling will set timeframes for any objections and we can go from there. I think that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Meserve.
Yes, just one clarification. I think. With the hearing issues. I mean, well, with the approach, the petitioner having one version of the hearing issues and the rest of us having. Accepted a different version of the hearing issues, I think that's. Also in play is to something, obviously, I guess it sounds like you're going to address that in your um, in your ruling. But. It may be necessary, should you determine that the hearing issue should be adjusted around. The current situation. Um, that might also require a different testimony from DWR. So I guess I'm just flagging that as yet another issue on your uh. Fate. Uh, because, no, I mean, I think from our perspective, um, or at least from my perspective. You know, the. Think it's a deficiency in DWR's case in chief right now, that it doesn't address the hearing issues that um, the AHO has set out and. Whatever those hearing issues are, once they settle. The case in chief should address, and then we should respond to that. So the ordering is um. Concerning, um. One thing I would ask is if. DWR is going forward with some additional. Corrected testimony, you know, but it be provided in red line. Um, maybe that was already the um, plan, but that would. Assist in our review to understand what the differences are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meserve, and I, that makes it the red line request. If it is. Presented as errata. Um, that that a red line would be quite helpful. So I would ask for that from from DWR. In terms of the hearing issues changing. The scope of DWR's. Proposed evidence, um. Or evidentiary submittals. Let's deal with that. When it happened. I mean, my my initial response to that, I think I'd laid out in a prior ruling was that it's possible that the DWR would then submit any. Case in chief evidence that related to refinements to the hearing issues with the protestant's case in chief, case in chief. I still think that's probably appropriate, given that. Generally speaking, in water rate proceedings, we just have protesters and and. Petitioners file their case in chief at the same time. Um, here, the protesters do have the advantage of having, and and I think it's appropriate, having DWR put on the bulk of its case in chief up front. Um, but if there are some necessary revisions, my initial thought had been to have those wrapped in with. Protestant's case in chief presentation. Um, and have the same deadlines for. For protestant's case in chief exhibits and then any supplemental. DWR case in chief exhibits that are prompted by. Any refinements to the hearing issues, but I think once again, let's. Instead of dealing with it in the hypothetical, let's get this ruling, we'll get this ruling out and I know there's many moving parts and this is not. Linear, but I think we can deal with it at the, at that time, but I under, I appreciate your comments, Ms. Meserve. Are there any other procedural comments? Then I I want to thank all of you for a very, what I consider to be a very, very productive discussion. Um. Today, this was very helpful. I am planning to get out a procedural ruling as efficiently as possible, but I also need to. And the hearing team needs to confer, uh, because these are significant. Decisions and a lot of moving parts, but I also recognize that we are under. All of you are under time pressure and you need to know what it is we're doing. So um, I will attempt to do that and I thank all of you. Everyone who participated today for your very constructive comments and this discussion. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.